All this meeting ordered, please stay into the vacation and silence the electronic devices so they can conduct their business. Please join us in the Lord's Prayer.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Let us stay our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And we will not into temptation, but deliver us from evil.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no change, just as all. Today we have a special conference meeting, and the first order of business is proclamation, which is Richmond, who takes your presentation to Mr. Ireland and his retirement.
Right front and center.
My privilege for the proclamation.
Here you go.
Whereas Gregory Ireland has retired as a captain from the City of Batavia Fire Department on June 19, 2022, after nearly 25 years of service, and whereas Gregory Ireland began his career on September 4, 1999, as an EMT basic, working his way through the ranks of the City of Batavia ambulance division to EMT intermediate on March 11, 2001, and EMT paramedic on October 11, 2011. Gregory brought knowledge and dedication to the City of Batavia Fire Department. He was promoted to firefighter on May 13, 2002, promoted to lieutenant on June 14, 2015, and promoted to captain on October 28, 2018. And whereas Gregory Ireland was a positive role model to all of the fire department throughout his 23-year career, Gregory was educated, educated numerous first responders in Genesee County through his teaching of EMS programs with the City of Batavia Fire Department. His compassion for educating people, both young and old, regarding fire safety, along with his involvement in starting the first public safety assisted addition recovery unit at a fire department in New York State, all have reflected his dedication to our community. Therefore, be it resolved, in the true spirit of appreciation, for many years Captain Gregory Ireland has served as a City of Batavia employee. The City Council of City Batavia hereby makes this proclamation to sincerely thank him for 23 years of dedicated service in our community and wish him well in his retirement. Congratulations.
I always say to people that one of the best days, one of the luckiest days of my life, one of the best days of my life was September 4, 1999, and that's when I got to join the family of the City of Batavia Fire Department. And as it is a family, it's always going to be a part of my family, and I was just lucky to be a part of it, and lucky to be standing here today and enjoy the moment. Thank you.
Hey Greg, the check's in the mail.
The PBA has a donation to make.
So over the past year, the PBA members, specifically members of the emergency response team that are members of PBA, have been working on fundraising to assist the department with upfitting the emergency response team in specifically some areas that Matt will talk about here shortly, but we appreciate that for recognizing, you know, the need to do this and stepping up and doing so, and they donate some pretty big items, so I'll let them take a look.
All right. Good evening, council members. So as Chief said, in the summer of 2022, we had a Pancake Breakfast fundraiser at Grace Baptist Church here in Batavia. The PBA and members of the emergency response team raised approximately $3,600 at that event. I just want to say a big thank you to Grace Baptist, who helped us with the fundraiser and using their facility, and they provided staff to assist us as well. The PBA managed the funds and facilitated the fundraiser, and using those funds, we purchased the following equipment. We purchased four cameras and a monitor display for our rescue vehicle, specialty breaching equipment, two red dot optics, an unmanned aerial vehicle, otherwise known as a drone, including light package and upgraded batteries, storage bins and miscellaneous team equipment, and we plan on purchasing a new optic for our sniper team. So we were able to get quite a few items. Those items, once they're purchased, are donated to the city for the city's use. We appreciate everyone that supported us.
Police Station Seeker?
Yes, thank you, Council President. As council is aware, the city continues to finalize design of the 20,000 square foot police facility at the corner of Alva and Bank. The city needed to review the project in accordance with New York State Environmental Quality Review Regulations. On February 13, the city proclaimed its intent to serve as lead agency. We have not had any feedback to this point from the letters that were sent out, so we're able to move forward with the Seeker designation. And just so everyone is aware, City Council will be declaring that based on the environmental record, which you have here before you, that it will result in no major impacts and therefore will not cause significant adverse impacts on the environment. So asking to approve the Seeker resolution and move it to tonight's business meeting, please.
Anyone have any questions on that? Is there a consensus then to move that to tonight's business?
Rachel.
Can we redo it?
Is the Seeker complete now?
The Seeker will be complete after the council finalizes this resolution, yes. And we can move to bonding at the next meeting.
So that moves. Call off the beta war.
Thank you, Council President and members of the council. On February 23, the police department advertised for bids for the purchase of Glock firearms to replace our current firearms issued by the police department. Bids were advertised and returned by the New York State authorized Glock distributors, which there's only three in New York State or just part of New York State. One is Glock itself. They did not bid on it because we suspect with the optic included, but as you can see, we are recommending to award the bid to Cam Char Wholesale out of Rochester with the lowest price. If there's any specific question, I will defer to Chris Cam, who's a support of this technically. Go ahead.
How many Glocks are you going to turn in?
Thirty-five.
So the same number that you're purchasing that?
Yeah, we're going to get actually one additional. Our department's grown in size a little bit with the SROs, so the intent is to purchase 36 Glocks.
And the other thing, is this complete now? Includes holsters, everything?
Yes, while the bid does not include holsters themselves, these are just for the firearms. That went out of the separate contract purchase.
Okay, thanks.
Good job. I would have made the exact same pick, so you're on the right track. Good job on that. Any other questions? Okay, is there a consensus to move that to tonight's business meeting for a vote?
Yes.
Motion for adjournment. Mr. Beely. Seconded by Mr. Richmond. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Beely?
Yes.
Canaly?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes. Okay, now call order the regular business meeting. Any public comments?
No.
We received a license application for Wendy Brew in the Harvester Center, and there were no objections from the police department on that.
Any questions from councils? Okay, the next one.
Go Art has requested to hold a steel band festival on Saturday, April 15, 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. This would be on the stage in the city center concourse.
Any questions or concerns on that? Go ahead.
Eli Fish submitted their application for an outdoor carnival on Saturday, July 8. This would be 4:00 to 10:00 p.m. in Jackson Square with live music, entertainment, food, and drinks.
Any questions on that? Okay, and the next final one, I believe.
The last one is more of an informational. We have already started these, obviously, but we did ask them to do an event application just to have it a little bit more official. This is the indoor mall markets right here in the city center, started on February 4, running through April 27. I believe March 25 and April 15, there will not be any on those dates because there's other activities. This starts 10:00 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. in the concourse.
Any questions on that?
Yeah, I see someone selling alcohol. Is this just to go? There'd be no open box?
It cannot be open within the concourse, so it's the cider works who has a alcohol permit to vent. If we need an additional insured, we can also double check that. Thank you.
Is that for onsite consumption?
Nope, there's no alcohol served onsite.
I'd hate to violate a city ordinance. Thank you.
Anything else? The next city council meeting will be held Monday, March 27, 2023, 7:00 p.m. City Hall, Council Boardroom, second floor, City Center. You've all been given a copy of the January 23 financials. There was a mix-up, and the corrected version was put on your council desk for your perusal. Rachel, did you want to mention that one major correction that the place?
Well, it wasn't a correction. It was actually, I'm kind of glad it happened. It shows that your financial statements, before we moved to New World, they used to be done in Excel by Lisa Neary, where she would take balances of funds, transfer them into Excel. Now, whatever day we print the report, you get to see exactly that activity up to that date. So in the original financial statements you had, we had a transaction that occurred that showed revenue declining by $6.5 million. However, that, the next day, that transaction was reversed. So just to give you a high-level overview, right now, the general fund, year-to-date, we have $1.9 million, they call it a gain, to the positive between revenue and expenses. We still have to finish out two months of expenses. The only additional revenue coming in right now will be the last sales tax payment, and we do have $835,000 in encumbrances, which means purchases that were approved this year but not yet paid for. So so far, our revenue is doing well for the year in the general fund and is on track. Similar, the water fund and sewer fund has met their revenue projections, and also the health fund and the workers' comp fund are doing well. So just a quick note on that, and you can see that the amended budget here is $19 million. So we've talked about the budget we're bringing forward for '23, '24 at $19.4 million. It's only $400,000 more than this year's amended budget, so I'd like to point that out as well. If there's any specific questions inside the financials, I'd be happy to answer those as well.
Any questions? So are we in consensus to approve the January of 2023 financials?
Yes.
Okay, is it approved? You've all been given a copy of the February 2023 minutes. Any corrections, omissions, concerns about the minutes? So are we in consensus to approve the 2023 February minutes?
Yes.
Okay, that gets approved. We have many agenda items today. We'll start with 19, 2023, the override of the tax cap. Mr. Canaly? 2023, the adoption of the '23, '24 budget. Mr. Beely? 21, 23, the water rates. Mr. McGinnis? 22, 23, the governor's housing compact letter. Mr. Byakowski? 23, 23, the climate leadership letter. Mr. Richmond, did you want to?
2023, I'll take that.
24, 23, the investment policy. Mr. McGinnis? 25, 23, the purchasing manual. Mr. Schmidt? 26, 23, the capital reserve for the parking lot. Mr. Richmond? 27, 23, the employee benefit accrued liability reserve. Mr. Beely? 28, 23, the capital asset policy and lease policy. Mr. Canaly? 29, 23, the administrative reserves for the folding machine. We had to make an adjustment there. 30, 23, the equipment surplus for the police department. Mr. Richmond? 31, 23, the closeout of capital projects. Ms. Briggs? 32, 23, the TY LIN engineering services for Bank Street. Mr. Byakowski? 33, 23, the Marciocelli Bank Street streetscape enhancements. Mr. Canaly? 34, 23, shared services between DOT and City of Batavia. Ms. Briggs? 35, 23, the criminal justice services discovery grant. 36, 23, the negative declaration under Seeker that we just covered in the conference. Mr. Beely? And 37, 23, the contract for the Glocks. City attorneys, report?
Yes, nothing specific to report on the members of council. One matter for executive session, ma'am.
All right. Any questions for the city attorney? Okay, city managers, report?
Yep, you all just received the update for the last month, so I'll just touch on a few highlights. I have prepared a letter for your review on Elecet Station. If there's any comments or corrections that you'd like to see in there, or if council wants to issue it as a body, please let me know. Krista has a signature page which she can pass around to get signatures to send the letter. With that, Jackson Square, we continue to rework and redesign the parameters, not the layout and everything will remain exactly the same, there'll be a stage, but we found ways to cut costs by using existing concrete, using dyes and concrete to add color to the space, not ripping everything up and replacing everything. So we're really excited what Ken Pearl at Architects Unlimited has brought to the project. I work with the bid to keep them up to date because we do want to go out to bid in the spring. We're not sure if the work will happen in the summer, but would they stop work for Friday nights for the concerts so they can still hold them, or just wait till September for the work to be completed? And lastly, the city is moving into its year-end processes. Purchasing cutoffs have occurred. We're closing purchase orders, so departments are very busy with that financial activity and getting ready to do annual performance reviews. And that's all I have at this time.
Any questions for the city mayor? Thank you. A mini-report?
Yeah, Mr. President, we're moving forward for the Memorial Day Parade. I've worked with Mr. Frank. We've set the, of course, it'll be on Memorial Day. Parade will kick off this year at 9:30 in the morning. Mr. Frank will be taking care of the street closures, and the parade will be the same as it has been in the past. Invitations will be going out within the next few weeks to various organizations, and I have a couple people who volunteered to help me with this, so looking forward to it and nice weather.
Good. Thank you. You do a good job over here.
Thank you.
Yes, thanks, Bob.
Unfinished business? Okay, Resolution 19, 2023. Mr. Canaly, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to adopt local law number one to override the tax cap limit for the budget fiscal year commencing April 1, 2023.
Seconded by Mr. Beely. Questions or concerns?
Yeah, I just, as I've said in the past, I'm opposed to this. I think it can be avoided. The county's giving us 392,000 additional sales tax revenues. I've had contact from many taxpayers and voters, and they're very upset with this. So that's my position and opinion. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I mean, just to add to that, I have had many voters ask me to vote no, and I am going to do so. We don't want to use the county money because it's one-time money, but we did use the one-time alliance money for raises. So next year, I don't know how we're going to cover those raises, but we're using one-time money for raises, but we won't use one-time money for the tax cap override, so that's just my comment.
I have a few things I just wanted to point out. Last year, we lowered taxes by .78 cents per thousand, and that was before all the inflation really hit and things really got out of control. What I like this year is that we're getting back to restoring a pre-COVID level of services to our residents, which has taken a long time to do. We're able to do that this year. We're not using $110,000 out of retirement reserves, which we were kind of forced to do the last two years. We've broken away from that. We're not using VLT money to supplement the budget because we got burned all the time, and it was hard not to do during COVID because we were struggling like everyone else, but we were able to get off of that. So that's a huge step in the right direction. We've lowered our debt service by 9%, which has put us in good financial condition to bond the new police station, the LED streetlight conversion, the ice ring chiller, the Zamboni, and three upcoming major water and sewer infrastructure improvements. So I think we're on the right track to provide the services that people expect in the public safety and things like that. Even though at this point, we're still taking $454,000 out of the fund balance to kind of cover the budget this year, and it still leaves us a balance at 17.5% of the general fund, which is recommended by the professionals and the experts to maintain a 15% to 25% unassigned fund balance. It's right where I'd like us to be. We could do a little better. Being at 15 is the bare minimum and kind of risky, and we found that out, and we got hit with COVID, and we wished we had more. So saving the money and being fiscally responsible for all these years has paid off. Property taxes make up 34% of our budget, and I understand that it's tough, but the remaining 66% comes from other income sources. So we're providing a lot of services for, and actually, the taxpayer is funding the 34% of it. The other 66% is innovative, proper ways to raise income without hitting the taxpayer every time they need a little money for a project. So I think we're doing pretty good. I'm really happy with it. All the people I talk to understand the situation we're in. They give us their full support, and I have had just one or two people that have concerns, and after talking to them, they understand where we were at. So I just wanted to make that clear because, you know, there's some negativity here. I'm not happy about the tax cap either, but I think under the circumstances, what we're achieving here and how we're doing it, I think, is the proper way to go, and I really, I really support this budget because of those circumstances. Does anyone else would like to make a comment? Mr. Beely?
Yeah, I agree with Eugenio, and I want to thank Rachel and the department heads on creating a good budget for the city. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I received a couple of calls, but what I did was, I explained everything to them because I called Rachel. I explained everything to them and why we were doing it, and they were fine. They said, "Thank you." We didn't understand it, but once I explained it, they were fine.
That was my experience as well.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, call the roll.
Councilmember Canaly?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
No.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
No.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Resolution 20, 23, the budget ordinance. Mr. Beely?
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution adopting 2023, '24 budget plans.
Seconded by Ms. Briggs. Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Beely?
Yes.
Canaly?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
No.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
No.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Resolution 21, 23. Mr. McGinnis, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution adopting the local law amendment section 184-41A, B, C, and O of Batavia Municipal Code to establish new water rates, meter rates, and a capital improvement fee.
Seconded by Mr. Beely. Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Canaly?
Yes.
Resolution 22, 23. Mr. Byakowski, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution to urge the New York State Legislature and Governor Hochul to reevaluate Governor Hochul's housing compact proposal.
Seconded by Ms. McGinnis. Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Canaly?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Resolution 20, 23. Mr. Richmond, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution authorizing opposing the New York State Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act Scoping Plan.
Seconded by Ms. Schmidt. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Canaly?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Resolution 24, 23. Mr. McGinnis, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution authorizing the adoption of the investment policy for the City of Batavia, New York.
Seconded by Mr. Beely. Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
Resolution 2523, Ms. Schmidt, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution authorizing the adoption of a purchasing manual for the City of Batavia, New York.
Second in line, Mr. Canelli. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Resolution 2623, Mr. Richmond.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution transferring $8,100 to the Parkin Black Capital Reserve Fund.
Second in line, Ms. Briggs. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Resolution 2723, Mr. Beely, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution transferring $72,316,31 cents for employee benefit, accrued liability reserve, and the amended budget.
Second in line, Ms. Schmidt. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Beely?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Resolution 2823, Mr. Canelli, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution authorizing the adoption of a capital asset policy and a lease policy for the City of Batavia, New York.
Second in line, Mr. Byakowski. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Resolution 2923, Ms. Schmidt, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to use additional administrative reserves for the Pitney Bowes Folding Machine and amend the '22, '23 budget.
Second in line, Mr. Beely. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Resolution 3023, Mr. Richmond, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to declare Police Department Equipment Surplus for the purpose of disposal.
Second in line, Mr. McGinnis. I have a question. You took the cars out?
Yeah, so just to bring you up to speed, so currently, our fleet has suffered some issues with regards to maintenance and vehicles being down for an extended period of time, so I did remove those vehicles from the surplus at this point in time. Hopefully, in a couple weeks, you guys will see that again, and we can get those vehicles down. Right now, we need them to be in service on the road.
Okay, I saw the strikeout in this case.
Mr. President, can we just leave that in here?
No, you've got an updated version.
Right, no, what I'm saying is, if we leave the vehicles in, then in a couple of weeks, they should just disperse.
I don't know, what's the legal aspect of that? I think that once they're declared surplus, we can't use that.
I would suggest you postpone declaring the two vehicles surplus while they're still in use.
Because, I mean, it might be indefinite. They might have to keep it longer than we want to. I mean, I don't know, what is the timetable? Could be a week, could be longer, right?
Right.
So it's just another resolution. We'll bring it up at a meeting, and we'll get it figured here.
Right.
Any other questions or concerns? Okay, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Okay, Resolution 3123, Ms. Briggs, please.
I move a resolution to close out capital projects.
Second in line, Mr. Richmond. Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Resolution 3223, Mr. Byakowski, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution authorizing agreement with TY Lin International for engineering services for the Bank and Elvis Street Traffic Calming and Streetscape Enhancements. Bank and Elvis Tap.
Second in line, Ms. Schmidt. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Resolution 3023, Mr. Canelli, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution authorizing agreement with New York State Department of Transportation for Master Federal Aid, Marcelli Aid Project Agreement, Bank and Elvis Street Streetscape Enhancements.
Second in line, Ms. Briggs. I thought you misspoke. I meant to say 3323. I think I said third by mistake, but anyway, that's the right one. Any questions or concerns? Okay, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Resolution 3423, Ms. Briggs, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to enter into a shared services agreement between New York State Department of Transportation and City of Batavia.
Second in line, Mr. Richmond. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?